Madam Chair, members of the Board, you have enclosed in your packet some background information that Jesse Dean had prepared for us. Jesse is the City Engineer for the city of Brainerd and oversees the transit system for Brainerd, Baxter, Pine River, and Crow Wing County, correct?
Correct.
And what he's pointing out is that there are some budget shortfalls. The ridership, fare box revenue, plus the MINDOT grant, looks like it is no longer going to be able to cover the cost of the existing transit system. And so, he will bring forward some recommendations for you, but it's a combination of fare box rate increases and/or service reductions that could get us back to that break even point.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. As Administrator Hull kind of alluded to, we had some financial shortfalls last year. We went through an analysis of the program through all the different partners and trying to get an idea of where can we do some improvements. So, just to break down the Crow Wing County side of this, we did an analysis of if nothing changed, what would we have to be charging today to balance the books based on what costs we're seeing currently? And what we found was, really what we should have been charging is somewhere in the realm of $11, $12 per fare. Knowing if that was the change, we were going to see a pretty significant hit in ridership. So, it kind of prompted us to really take a look, a hard look at the service out there, and can we make some changes that make it a little bit more tenable while still maintaining a large majority of the service, knowing that there's not only just our regular riders that are coming from like Crosby and Pequot, but we have productive alternatives that commutes from those communities, as well as St. Francis that has a lot of children that kind of come from those outer areas and comes to the school. So, we're trying to maintain a semblance of all those things and trying to wrap up a program for the county that hopefully captures most of that. So, taking a look at that, we came up with this, what's in the packet as a recommendation is rather than the several trips per day that we're making out to Pequot and Crosby, which is usually four, five, sometimes even six a day with very limited ridership, is kind of consolidating a lot of those rides into maybe a twice-a-day commuter service, something in the morning and something in the afternoon. We felt like this was a way to capture at least a lot of the county riders, as well as the same productive alternatives that are riders that are coming in for work, as well as the St. Francis kids that are coming in for school. We felt that that was a program that we could probably do a little bit with changing, reduce some of the expenses, and come up with this recommendation here, coupled with an increase in fares as well for some of that service. So, you see in the recommendation that we have a few different fares, but generally it's about $8 per ride, $12 for same-day service. But, we came to that conclusion with knowing that we have to make some sort of change because it would really be untenable to continue trying to charge people, you know, upwards of $12 per fare. Not that $8 is a really great number either, but it's obviously an improvement over there. The other part of this that we have to consider is, I did just present this to Pine River, and they did elect to cancel their program based on the analysis that we did of their program. So, originally, they were covering about 7% of the share. Now, with them canceling, that ultimately falls on the other three partners that are in this group to pick up some of that share. So, while we're able to do some improvements here, we also have to take on a little bit extra from the loss of that 7% share. So, trying to balance all these things and come up with a recommendation that we think makes sense and that we can continue the program for at least a majority of the riders there. With that, I'll open it up to question time.
Madam Chair, Jesse, so, did you say Pine River decided not to do it anymore?
Correct. We started publishing, I think it's the, close to the end of July, that we'll be no longer servicing Pine River.
Did they have a con, did you have a conversation of why they said they would, decided not to do it?
So, we came up with a recommendation similar in here. Our recommendation was to discontinue the service based on what we were coming up for what they really should have been charging for the expenses that it takes to run a bus up there every day. Their fares are going to be pushing like $20 per ride within the city limits, and obviously we know that that's not tenable either, and nobody's going to ride within the city of Pine River for $20 a fare. So, it became a question of, to keep it fares at a reasonable rate, the city would help us have to
Subsidize it.
subsidize, you know, their ridership and come up with some funding on the side of that. And they ultimately said, you know what, we're okay without doing that.
And Madam Chair, Rosemary, I'm going to speak for you too, because we were on transit for a long time, and Rosemary and I were always, and I don't know, I'm assuming you're still the same, that we were on, we were okay with transit as long as it was a break even deal. But, to me, and now I'm not speaking for Rosemary, I'm speaking for myself, if this, if it gets to the point where transit is not a break even deal, and we have to subsidize it by taking people's property taxes to subsidize this, I am not in favor of it all. And for the rest of the Board, this is not something that we're required to do. We don't have to provide transit, we're not mandated
That's correct.
to do it. So, anyway, that's just where I'm at. I just, as long as it's, as long as it's neutral and not, we don't have to subsidize it, I'm okay with keeping it. But if we have to subsidize it, then I just say we need to, we need to take a strong look at getting rid of it.
Madam Chair members, if you look at page, I think it's, is this six? Six of the packet, you'll see the staff recommendations there. And the first one is the reference right there. The first one is the reference to Pine River, and that recommendation did get implemented. The second one is related to our transit system. It would convert the county routes in Crosby and Pequot Lakes to twice daily routes. They believe that this would still be adequate to pick up St. Francis students and productive alternative employees, but it would reduce service levels to Crosby and to Pequot Lakes to twice daily service. The third recommendation, below that, there's a recommendation for the Brainerd system, there's a recommendation for the Baxter system, and then there's a recommendation for the productive alternatives, and the fares for Crosby and Pequot Lakes would move from $8 to $12. And the productive alternative subscription riders and St. Francis subscription riders are on the next page. They would move, they would stay at $8. The, I think, based on those two recommendations, we believe that the transit system would then roughly break even again. The other way to avoid having those service reductions is, we can certainly subsidize the transit system so that you would retain those service levels, or we could increase the fare box revenues even more. But, as you increase fare box revenues, you will see ridership going down. And so, the difficulty here is, we're trying to guess how many riders there will be based on this change in fare box charges. That's a speculative venture, you know. So, this is how we run transit. We're trying to break even based on our projections. It never works out to zero, but it's not much. We don't put much into transit. That's the way I'd have to characterize it. We don't put much into transit, but we do put some.
And if I could add a really quick piece to that, to your point, we're doing a lot of assumptions in this and projecting out what we think ridership would be affected. And we did put in some drops in ridership, knowing that this recommendation would likely lose a few riders. But, we would also want to come back to this in six months towards the end of the year and say, hey, how close were our recommendations? Did our projections come out to where we think? And if they didn't, relook at this program and see if there's more adjustments that need to be made. But, we wanted, we do want to come back and kind of confirm some of those recommendations.
So, Madam Chair, so, question Jesse, I think I understand this. So, you got Brainerd, regular fare, $4, same day. So, that means if you schedule the ride ahead of time, it's $4. If it's, if you call that same day, it's $8? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay. And Baxter, sick, okay. You know, and I guess this is just kind of an editorial comment, is, I know we still have a taxi, I see him riding around. Boy, I don't know if you could, I don't know if you could get a taxi ride for $4 or $8. It just ain't going to happen. And I'm just wondering, Jesse, if you know, I know other places, Uber and Lyft is, there's a lot of that. Do we have any of that here? Uber, Lyft? Are you aware of that, or?
I'm not aware of Uber and Lyft. I believe the taxi service, we recently, I'll say recently, but a handful of months ago, we kind of looked into that as well. And it was somewhere in the realm of like $8 to $10 for kind of a Brainerd to Walmart type of ride.
Okay.
So, to this point, it is a little bit la, I mean, same day is obviously pretty close to that number, but if you're scheduling ahead of a time, it is a little bit lower. But it is also kind of a scheduled ride on a bus, taxis more on demand
Right.
and when you call. So, there's a little bit of nuances to the two different pieces, but yeah, it's generally about that. I'm not sure what the cost for running up Brainerd taxi up to like a Crosby or Pequot, but I would venture a guess it's quite a bit more than the $8 to $10.
A lot more, yeah. What about Uber? Does anybody know if Uber or Lyft, if we're, if there's a lot of that around here? I know in the big cities, there's just a ton of that, and you can get a, you know, ride that way, and it's
Not that I know of.
and it's less, it's less than, it seems like it's less than a taxi ride, you know. Anyway, I just was curious. So, what you're saying here is, if we adopt this plan, we're hoping that it's neutral, that we're, okay.
Tim, did the Brainerd, Baxter, did their fares go up?
So, I have not, I presented the initial one to Brainerd. They elected to wait until the other cooperative partners had reviewed theirs before they made a decision. So, it is on the July 3rd council meeting. Baxter, I am presenting to their Board this evening.
Madam Chair, if I might, I would, and this isn't editorializing also, so this isn't about you, Jesse. I get frustrated with, with
My God.
MINDOT, who gives us the money for transportation. And yet, they finance all that fancy stuff down there in the cities. And I realize there's a big need down there, but when they spend billions of dollars down there, legislature is a partner in that, giving that money out to the Metropolitan Council, and then they spend that money down there, and they forget about greater Minnesota. And we've struggled all the time, Region 5 Tax Committee struggles with getting money for public transportation. Society has decided that our elderly should stay in their homes as long as they can. Some of them, we don't want driving. And so, we need to have public transportation out here. And I realize that it's a sketchy process, but it frustrates me that we make one decision on how they should live, but we won't support how they live and how they get to their appointments or shopping, whatever they need to do. And that frustrates me that they'll spend billions down there, and then they want to reduce. And what I'm reading in your report is that, over the course of the next few years, they're going to start reducing that dollar amount that comes out here to us. Am I correct? Did I read that correct?
Their, their operating expenses, so normally, they fund about 85% of the operating expenses. In the last handful of years, it's really specifically for COVID, they were up towards, close to 100% of the operating expenses. So, as we've kind of come out of the COVID time, they've started ratcheting that back because they do want to get back to the, call it the standard 85%. The next couple of years, they're expected to fund 95%. But, like I mentioned in this analysis, they're really not funding that full 95% because they're also capping us year over year on the award. So, we're still running into this 2% cap. Now, there's potential options, but there's no commitments from MINDOT on what we have to kind of remedy some of that issue, to get caught up. But, we are continuing to work with MINDOT to kind of come up with some solutions.
Then I do have one other question, and this is in reference to productive
Where's that from?
alternatives.
Really?
If you didn't have that ridership, how much would that impact the budget?
Quite considerably. Productive alternatives carries quite a bit of the ridership. Let me see here if I can ballpark about what it is. It's roughly about 1/3 of what the ridership is for the county currently. So, it, it's quite a bit right now. So, if you lose that much ridership, you have to build enough ridership to make up for the difference. Otherwise, you have to make up for it with higher fares, and obviously, higher fares leads to less ridership. So, it's a delicate balance. We don't want to charge too much that we lose riderships, because once you lose the ridership, you have to make up for it. And we don't want to get into that spiral of chasing, I guess, let's call it that.
The reason I ask that question is, my son goes to EEI down in Little Falls, and they send, you know, a van up here to pick up clients that go down there for that sheltered workshop. And so, I was just thinking in my head, why, why doesn't productive alternatives? But, stepping back from that, when it's a 30% of our budget, seems like a pretty significant amount. So, we wouldn't want to lose that ridership. So, I thank you for that information.
Madam Chair, does the, any of the other communities put in to this? I mean, does, is there a contract with Brainerd, Baxter, or Crosby? Do they put funds into this also?
Direct, like levy funds? No. Everything is right now funded, or at least intended to be funded through fare box revenue, generated through ridership. And then the other portion is generated through our MINDOT and federal grants for the transit program. So, that's the intention of the program currently. When we run a shortfall, that's where we have to run to our partners and say, this is what we didn't fund through our fare box revenue, and it's kind of the balance going forward for the previous year.
I mean, they're all county residents, so, you know, they all fall under us. But, but, you know, the cities like, you know, like Pequot Lakes, I mean, if, you know, it's a lot of their residents that are using it. So, I mean, I don't know if anybody's ever asked that community to put any money in to help offset having that service available to their residents.
We have not asked the city specifically, but we are also not a cooperative partner under agreement with the city directly either. The only agreement that we actually have is with the county when it comes to the service.
Just a question, I'm not, not familiar as these people are with it.
So, Madam Chair, so, Jesse, a question. When you first began your talk, you said, well, it's 7%. Because we lost Pine River, we had to make up that 7%. You need to explain that to me because that doesn't make sense. So, when you, when you say make up the, is it the subsidy and the ridership fee that they're paying? Is that what you're saying? Because I guess, I guess I need to understand that. I would think that our system is 100%, and then if we take on that, I don't know why we got to make up 7% because we lost that. Does that make sense?
Let me take a stab at it. The, think about the library system. And we come together as a group of counties to produce a library system. Each of us has decided that our contribution is going to reflect how much our libraries are going to be open. There is also a contribution we're making to the system, and the system is the card catalog, the books, the, all of the overhead at the central office. And so, we're all contributing towards that overhead. Pull one signatory out, the overhead hasn't substantially changed, and now you're going to split it fewer ways.
A little bit, though. A little bit.
Yes, a little bit.
Because we're not driving up there.
Same with Fire Advisory Board. We ran into that problem with the Fire Advisory Board, and the same will be true here. When you have a group of partners coming together, each of them is funding a proportionate share of the central costs. Pull that partner out, how do you fund their portion? You divide it among the remaining.
But, we do have a little bit of savings by not having to go up there and
Absolutely.
That is correct. Yep.
Well, I guess I don't have any more questions. I guess, like I said, as, as long as it's, is, is the fare box is taking care of it, and it's a break even deal, then I guess I got no problem with it. But, once we start to have to levy people to subsidize this, I just, I just don't know how that's fair.
Madam Chair, if I might, I just would like to thank you for the analysis that you did in putting this together, and with the caveat that we'll come back in six months after looking at this to see where we're at and what our direction should be going forward. So, appreciate that very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, we'll bring forward this recommendation for you in the next Board packet. Would you prefer it on the consent agenda or a regular agenda? I'm okay with it on the consent agenda. I don't know. I think we've kind of drilled down here. I don't know that we're going to need to drill down anymore on it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Yes, you are. Thank you. Time that just right.
Are we letting him sit at that table, or is he supposed to sit up there?
Presenting.
He can sit wherever he wants.
He can sit wherever he wants. Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I was always told let the elected official speak first, so I'll let Don go first.
Oh. All that coaching has helped.
It wasn't an elected official that told you.
Well, good morning, everyone. Gary and I are here today to discuss trying to catch up on some of the review of our zoning and land use ordinances. During COVID, like a lot of things, we fell behind in trying to keep up on stuff. And I know historically, the Board has, well, most recently, wanted to look at just one thing at a time, kind of in its silo. We're far enough behind now that I don't think that's a good thing to do. And early on, when the COVID funding came out, I was approved to bring on two temporary lawyers and two temporary legal assistants, and so that money was set aside to do that for a two-year period. We've spent very little of it. And so, I have some non-levy dollars that we could try to allocate for legal services. We would contract with Paul Reivers and, who's his partner?
J. Squires.
J. Squires, who are experts in the field of land use. MCIT hires them to represent us all the time. We've spoken to them, and they have interest in meeting with us and trying to help us go through the whole ordinance simultaneously. And when I say the whole ordinance, Gary's got more of the details on that. Steph Shook in our office is working on that project as well. And they've met with Chris Pence, and I think they had a phone conference with Paul, kind of trying to, Paul Reivers outlined what that might look like, and whether they'd be interested or not. And so, we're here today to let you know that we're looking at doing this, get some input from you, see what your thoughts might be. From my perspective, if you just take one piece of a land use regulation, go through it and do what you want to do with it, and don't look at the rest of it, and you go to the next one, the way they all interlink, you really need to look at all of it at once. And I know, as an elected Board, you're sitting there, and all of a sudden, if we would come in and we would give you 500 pages of legislative changes, like we got from the legislature this year, and we're still continuing to try to work through it, it gets kind of confusing. So, we could, as we're looking at this holistically, as we get one portion of it to where we believe it's something we could come in and, and it probably won't be me, it would be Steph Shook and Gary or Chris Pence or whoever it would be, come in and explain it to you and just kind of work through it methodically. That we can still do, but I still think this is a good project at this time for us to work on and look at a more holistic review of where we're at. Again, we fell behind in COVID, and we just haven't been able to catch up with what previous Boards have asked us to continue to do. And with a funding source, I think it's an opportunity we should take. I can answer any questions about that portion of it, or Gary's got the actual, more of the details about which sections they're looking at and their interrelation and stuff like that.
So, I probably should just wait till Gary gets there, but so, just, can you, can you give me an example of what, what is, what is wrong with the ordinance now? I mean, what, just, it's just not up to date with what's happening in the world now, or I guess I don't, I guess I don't quite understand?
I couldn't say it better myself.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's part of it. You continually need to review as, you know, laws change, your policies and procedures and what you're doing. Personally, I've been involved in the subdivision ordinance, and what is a subdivision, or when you can do a lot line split or some of those types of issues. And actually, there's some litigation that was commenced because of what the other attorney at least believed was confusion within the language. So, sometimes it's cleaning up something as simple as this ordinance says this, the land subdivision ordinance, but we have a definition that's inconsistent potentially with the wording there. So, it's just going through and tweaking and looking at where we need updates and some things like that.
How?
One more, sorry to interrupt. But, through either Paul Reivers or Scott Anderson, when he had been representing us in some of these issues, they have proposed several tweaks or changes that they believe we should consider or we should review and look at. Part of their, and then Scott went and retired, but going to see if they both wanted to work on it. Part of the reason we're picking Paul is because he's familiar with our ordinance already, ordinances, excuse me, already.
So, what about, how does it work then? How long of a process would it be? And then, we just kicked off the, a two-year plan of a comprehensive plan. How does that work then to, wouldn't you try to, wouldn't that be kind of a melding of those together? Or, or how, I should just probably just let you give your presentation, and then that probably will answer all my questions.
There definitely can be, well, good morning again. There definitely could be some changes that could be driven by the comp plan. However, a lot of these things that we're talking about today, like our FEMA guidelines and floodplain section of the ordinance, definitely needs to be updated. Our non-conformities have inconsistencies throughout the ordinance, and things like that, that definitely need to be cleaned up and thoroughly vetted. And it's not that we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. You know, it's a great ordinance. It's one of the best ones in the state. This is to make it even better and more clear when people are interpreting it. And sometimes, these things come from folks that want to do something, and they go, well, wait a minute, it says this, right? Well, and then here we are going, no, we've interpreted it this way. And then sometimes, we need a legal opinion, and they help us understand, well, in case law, we've, it's been this way, if you word it this way or that way. And so, that's where you constantly are needing to update an ordinance. And in this case, we do have more of a comprehensive review and update. But, we, and we did try, you know, we did do this about, I want to say it was like four years ago. And the, I think, the mistake we made there was, here's all, here's everything we're going to do, instead of maybe just, you know, walking through smaller chunks of that. We tried to do the whole thing at one time. And that's so much to kind of, I want to say comprehend, not that you can't do it, but when you fit these things in amongst your regular job of running the place, it can get to be overwhelming and sometimes very confusing. It's my two cents. And so, the idea is, we have a list of stuff here that just of recommendations from attorneys or things that staff have identified through different issues that have come around the last couple of years that definitely need some tweaks. If the county comprehensive plan shifts the development of the county a different way, well, then the ordinance potentially would need another revision if needed.
So, so I thought, it almost seems like we, we just went through this exercise. I can remember when we, I think we were all on Teams, and, and we were on Teams with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I said I didn't like that process.
Correct.
You know, if you remember. So, that seemed like it was just like a year or two years ago.
It was.
Or, was it longer than that?
It was longer than that. We were on Teams because we couldn't meet in person.
So, how would the process work then?
Yep. So, how the process will work is, once we're ready, we're just going to come back to the Board first, like a committee of the whole, and say, here are the items that are, we believe are ripe to, to update. We do need to run, have your blessing on that. We do need to run changes through the Planning Commission. So, there's a process. We'd go to the Planning Commission, then comment period, Planning Commission, and then it would be coming back to you for a County Board for adoption through that. But, we would start and end with the County Boards.
So, then the Planning Commission would look it over, would make recommendations.
Recommendations.
And then it would come back to us, and if we agreed with those recommendations, fine. If we don't, then we're good.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So, can you give me any example of, I guess I, I don't know, I guess I can't figure out what's changed, but I suppose some statute has changed, or something has changed that you got to change. It's like something has changed that, that you got to change. It's like, just like the $100 fee for going out, we just changed that. So that's what you're talking about, something like that?
That could be some smaller things like that, but we have larger things like resort conversions.
Oh.
Conservation design standards. We have numerous definitions that we have found or have learned better ways to define living units, or things like that, to make it more clear when we're administering the, the ordinance.
So, Don, a question for you. So then, if this is, I don't know if tightened up is the right word, but if it's, if this has gone through again, and the lawyers look at it, and it's, it's, it's much more in line with state statute or, or whatever, then less likely for somebody to come back and sue the county? I don't know, is that a good?
No, that's, that's a good way to put it. And the answer is yes. You know, the clearer our ordinance is, the less interpretation that it's going to need. So someone can come in, and I'll just pick on Gary because he's sitting here, they can come in, talk to Gary at the corners, this is what I want to do. They pull it all, they look at the ordinance, A, B, C, whatever. Yep, you can do it. That's the goal.
So this isn't some, this is, what you're presenting is kind of more a clean up the existing ordinance? I don't, I guess, I don't want, I don't want some, if there's somebody that's got, who doesn't have the same mindset as this board, who's coming up with some crazy ideas and is going to present them to us, and we're going to take a big turn to the left. That's not what's happening, is it?
No, we leave those to Tim Hall.
That was good.
My turns are only to the right.
But you know what I'm saying? I don't want somebody steering us in a direction that isn't agreeable to the people of Crow Wing County. I mean, I think we're just, we're all trying to protect the waters, trying to protect the land, trying to protect property rights, so we're not going too far astray of that. And so you're guaranteeing me of that. I mean, we'll have a look at it.
Well, I guarantee you, you get the final say, you five, yes.
Yeah, what do you think? I mean, any?
Well, I, the law is a living, breathing, dynamic thing. And what you find is that over the course of time, you will find problems with every law on the books, which is why the legislature gets together every year, why you guys meet. And then, not only that, but then also, people are thinking to do things with their property that you could never have contemplated they would want to do before. And so we see that. And that advances problems in an ordinance. You'll find things that nobody anticipated. And then thirdly, there's case law. People are suing each other all the time, and the courts are helping to define what these laws mean. And between those three things, there is a constant need to update your laws. Think of it as housekeeping to stay current. And I agree with Don that if you don't stay current with that housekeeping, you increase your risk of legal liability.
So then, Don, that brings up another question for me. So when Tim says case law, even as me, as I was a legislator and I pass some bill and get it into law, it might have been a little ambiguous, so it has a court case. And the court case is the standing law then of whatever the outcome of that is, correct? I mean?
That's close. So the legislature passes a law or a bill, and the governor signs it into law. And if there's ambiguity in it, or at least someone argues there is, then a court interprets it. And if the court finds there is no ambiguity, then they have a certain standard to review this way. If they find there is ambiguity, then they get to interpret what the intention of the law is.
Case law.
That was, but either way, it's case law. So it may not change the statute, but it will be a judicial ruling on the validity of the law, or they'll strike it down, or a portion of it saying that it was unconstitutional. Then that becomes the law of the land until the next legislative session. And then the legislature can adjust to the law, to what the court said, and then the legislation takes over again, and it becomes a big circle.
So then in essence, we have to, living, breathing thing, we have to keep adjusting our ordinance. If there's a case or case law, then it's probably a good idea to adjust our ordinance to match up with that.
Yes.
What I do hear so far at least is, you don't want huge policy changes.
No.
No.
Madam Chair, I think, I think Don said it right when it's catching up, catching up on some of the stuff that's already done. I talk pretty loud, you know that. Catching up on what's already out there, because just what we've seen with, with that case that was here when I just showed up, that you guys were finishing up on, you know, the county spent a fair amount of money on that. And was it because the, the ordinance or the law, the case law forced it to go that way? Or was, was the person weaving through the ordinances that we already had in place? You know?
That's a good example, and those are the types of things we're looking to try to shore up. Not make big, huge changes, not change the policy of the county. That's the county board's job. That's not our job.
And the growth we've seen in this county in the last 10 years, or I think the comp plan is 20 years old, but the, I, I don't know when the last time is, that we have looked at that to get those tightened up a little bit, because people are reading them and saying, it doesn't say I can't do that, so I must be, I can. So.
Gary, you never hear that, do you?
No.
We never see that, so, thank you.
How long of a process do you think this will be? I mean, from the start, if we, the county board, obviously, where I think we understand this has to be done, but how, how long before it gets to back to a, a regular county board meeting for adoption?
I know you're asking Gary, but I'd like to start with that. I don't think we can give you a timeframe right now, because we haven't had an initial real meat, meat and bones kind of sit-down session and try to outline what it's going to be. It's just a concept at this point. And we have an outside vendor, an attorney or two, that are willing to work with us. We're really not beyond that point. Yeah, there's been some stuff identified by staff or lawyers that told us that we have not been able to get to. But we're really at the conceptualization phase. So I don't know that we could really give you something, and I don't want to mislead you.
And so then, I'm sorry about asking so many questions, but, so then when we come, when it comes to us, will we see the original stuff, and then we'll see?
The red line?
The red line?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, it's funny, because when we, it was about 10 years ago, maybe longer, when we redid the airport joint powers agreement, I didn't know how to redline, because I'd never done it. And so I took the original one, and then I did know how to highlight, and so I took every amendment to the thing, and everything was in a different color. And Commissioner, you remember that Rosemary? They did not like that. It was looked really colorful, I thought. So I figured out how to redline right then and there. It took me a while, but.
You've came a long ways. All right.
So, any idea on what the cost of this would be?
We're on a time and materials, so we didn't, when we spoke with Mr. Reivers, Attorney Reivers, we asked for what would a cost be, and he said, you're better off, particularly since we'll have our own staff, and I'll have Stephanie Shook, one of our ACA's, working on it as well, just to pay him already. And that's the agreement we have right now.
So we've got plenty of funds left from the?
I believe we do, and we'll be monitoring that as we go. The goal is not to use levy dollars on this, because we have a funding source, and that is the goal.
And the, the, I guess if we continue to peck away at it as we have in the past, this should fast-track some of this stuff?
I think so.
Oh, yeah. Greatly.
Okay. So like, maybe the fire ring down by the lake?
Sure.
Could happen this season?
Well, and you have a good point, Commissioner Hope. If there are other ideas or things you want vetted, and go, hey, have we thought of something like this? Or this one never has made sense to me. By all means, you know, you guys are.
Short-term rentals never made sense to me, but.
That's a different ordinance.
Storage buildings.
Storage buildings.
Storage buildings would be maybe one that, you know, we hear a lot about pros and cons, neighborhood issues. I never thought storage buildings were going to get to be an issue, but they are. That's an example of something that is contemporary, that you guys are contending with, that you may wish to suggest, hey, that one needs a deeper dive. Something like that, that you're having some issues with, you know, people are not happy about. Those are the ones.
But you know what's funny with that is, is those storage units, as soon as they're built, they're literally filled up with junk. I mean, or with people's stuff. That's what it is. And so they're, they're, if, they wouldn't be building them if they weren't in demand.
There was no demand.
If there was no demand, they wouldn't be building them. And so I know that people, oh my God, another storage unit, but they're in demand, so I don't know. So what do we do? Say, oh, we're going to put a moratorium and not build? That doesn't even make sense. That'd be just like if somebody said, well, I think we got enough apartment buildings and enough people that have moved here, we're going to put a moratorium on that. That wouldn't even make any sense.
That's the whole thing about land use planning, the only sport in which the referee gets punched. We're basically trying to help people put compatible uses next to each other. So property rights. Of course, it's about property rights. It's about the competition between and among everyone's property rights. The right to a person to develop their property consistent with the law. The right of their neighbor to the quiet enjoyment of their property. They will have to put up with some things from their neighbor. We all do. What's reasonable? And you start, you start to see that an adult use next to a school might be an incompatible use. A factory next to a school, a factory next to residences, might be incompatible uses. The whole of land use planning is trying to separate incompatible uses. The debate is because we don't agree about what's compatible.
Madam Chair, how about the idea of highest and best use on some of these properties also? You know, when I look at the little town of Jenkins, we only had so much developable property. Would you want that to all be storage parks when it's in a highly commercial district? You would, yes. You would, of course. Thank you. But I mean, that's one of the things you kind of look at, and maybe that's something that you look at as an overall plan. You can't push it in any one way or the other, but you can make.
That would be up to Jenkins, though.
Well, that would be up to Jenkins and our own Jenkins, but we've got a lot of Crow Wing County. You'd leave like storage parks anywhere.
Yeah, and if I could jump in, like, something like that, Commissioner Lubke, like, in the comp plan, one of the things we, we've instructed potential consultant, you guys will be considering to adopt a contract at your next board meeting, is we're getting a lot of subdivision from 10 acres down to 5 acres, or 5 acres down to 2 and 1/2. And it just seems like those smaller lots are more affordable to folks. And is that something where we need more of a comprehensive review of our land use map? And go, do we need all of the larger lots that we continuously go through all these splits all the time, or land use map amendments that come before you? We've had quite a few of those in the last year. And should that be something that's more comprehensive, strategically looked at and say, you know, maybe we, we change some of those zonings to more developable or, you know, subdivisible, you know? It's something that's, you know?
I agree with that. It's just like I listened to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I don't know, a month or so ago, and Chris Pence spoke, and it was a, it was a family that I know out in Okee Lake Township, and, and they, it was, good Lord, I forgot his name all of a sudden. But anyway, it was, they wanted, this gentleman owned some land, and he just wanted to split it up, give it to his grandkids, you know, so that they could build a house there. I, that makes total sense to me. I mean, just if we're, if people are going to move here pretty soon, if it's all 10-acre or 15-acre chunks, that's not going to work. So I think, I think getting that kind of ironed out so that somebody doesn't always have to come to the planning commission, I think makes sense to me. John Morgan, that's what it was. That was John's good guy.
Questions, issues, concerns? Otherwise, how do you guys want to move this forward?
Well, from my perspective, I'm comfortable, I'll go meet with Stephanie Shook and have her talk with Chris Pence and Gary. Chris is off today, so Gary probably can't talk to him until tomorrow. And ask them to coordinate with Paul Reivers and go forward, identifying a work plan, since we've kind of got an outline here, and just roll up our sleeves and go to work.
Perfect.
And periodically, either Gary or I or someone can come in and just kind of tell you where we're at. Even if we don't have anything of substance to give you, we can just give you some updates, or maybe just to have, via email or whatever the board would like.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you so much. Sounds good.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.
You too.
You too. This mic is so hot. This room. I just heard this kind of booming in the room.
That's what happens when Don leaves.
Was that the booming in the room? I thought maybe Doug was talking.
Don't let Marv off the hook. Make sure you ask him a few questions before he leaves.
Oh, you know what I was going to ask you, Gary, about that? Do you have an update on that, on that school land? Have you been having any conversation with Reed?
Yeah, the, the ball is in our court.
Does everybody know what we're talking about?
I didn't. What'd you say?
The, the 80 acres of our land that the school leases for a dollar, and if you remember last year, we gave direction to Gary.
By the state hospital out there.
Well, it's, well, south of this, it's on DC Road and 25.
Oh, yep, yep.
So we gave direction to ask them if they want to sell it, or if they want to buy it, or are we going to sell it? And I think the last email I saw, we got a price tag of about 600,000 on that. Five or 600,000. So any update, Gary?
Sure. Just as a refresher to the board, that lease goes through the end of the year. And then it's, 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 it just expires. So then you'd have a decision what you'd want to do yourselves. I know you've extended an offer to the school if they're interested, kind of like a first, you know, first crack at acquiring the property. What we are in the process of doing is updating and tightening up the value or the number of that property. And we got to get that to Reed TC over there, so he can take it to the school board to see if they're, if that number makes sense to fit into their overall operational scheme and, and stuff. Should get that to him, hopefully by the, the end of the month, then he should have a couple of school board meetings. We're hoping to have something back from them and bring to you guys maybe around October-ish to see if they're wanting to pursue a purchase or not. And then we would ask you guys if you still want to sell or not. And then we would get it prepared for auction if that was the case.
And I, and I, my position hasn't changed. I think we need to sell that to, to who? I don't care who it is. We've logged that off already, just recently in the last couple of years, the northern part. And, and if there is a price tag of 500,000, it goes along with the plan that we've had for the last quite a few years of finding other parcels that, that are close to like 1,000 acres that we have and consolidating. It just makes more sense for us to jettison that parcel and, and look for other parcels that make sense for us to own.
Does that, does that timeline kind of work if we make sure, you know, we want to give you a little bit of time if they do not purchase, what you'd want to do with it. But.
I will only throw in one thing. You know, the center relies on their, on that farm to raise their flowers for their sale in the spring. We just got a report the other day at the board meeting, $26,000 they made off that plant sale. So it's a significant revenue source for them. So the sooner that the school district, and they've been warned, I, I've told them that we're waiting for the school district to make a decision on this. But they need to move on it, and I'm a little leery of the October date, but I'll let Reed figure out what he has to do to bring that to his board, but.
Sure.
Just to let you know that there, there's an impact to other people besides the school district, or, but I agree with, with Paul, you know, we need to do something with that property, so I'm not against that. If they're not going to purchase it, then it goes on the market.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's such a tall. So quiet in here. It's too quiet.
Go ahead. We have the county solid waste management plan, the draft of that. This plan is updated every 10 years. It's required by rule that we update every 10 years. We've had an established, successful program for over 30 years with the landfill as the foundation. We're committed to continuing the existing system and exploring waste diversion programs that benefit our residents and businesses, protect the environment, and meet regulations. We're gonna continue to rely on strategies that motivate individuals and businesses to reduce waste and recycle and extend the life of our landfill. We're looking for a few ways that she'll touch on here, just to get the word out about the programs we offer, either at the landfill, at Ideal Township, in Nisswa for recycling and other waste diversion activities are a highlight of the plan this year that the state wanted us to highlight. But I'll let, I have Tanya here from Burns McDonald. She'll kind of run through the plan for you.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, so Jessica touched on, so the solid waste management plan is a requirement by the state. Every 10 years, we have to update it, and I think, maybe? Hey, there we go. So the previous plan is set to expire in November per, we had to submit it six months prior. So we submitted the plan to the PCA, and that's a draft plan on May 12. The major updates to the plan were just to catch your updated demographic and geographic information, capture some existing systems that you have, anything that had changed in the previous 10 years, and any planned improvements to your system. And so the end goal from that is to get a, your updated certificate of need. And your certificate of need is what you need from the state in order to continue to dispose of waste, as well as get your SCORE funding to help fund those recycling programs. So our, and this is kind of a very large picture, but it's, it's the timeline of the landfill. So I don't know, do I have a? Maybe? No, maybe not. So in 2023, you can see, we had the solid waste management plan update as well. We also submitted a draft environmental assessment worksheet and a, the MSW landfill permit reissuance. And all three of those documents went in in May. The EAW was for the site life of the landfill. So we build it out. It's over 100 years of capacity with that expansion. And the permit covers your next 15 years of disposal capacity. So that's how the state chunks that out, and then they tie that to your certificate of need. So you can see, it's kind of a three-step process where the environmental review has to happen first. Then we anticipate they will establish your certificate of need, and then we'll go through the permitting process for the next sales at the facility. So, back to the draft plan. So, big things in the plan, just to capture the average annual population change. Crowing County, 0.58%. State average was 0.76%. So just how are you doing demographically? MSW generated per person per day, and this one's really interesting. Due to your highly tourism population, you have an aver, or a higher than average waste generated per person per day. But that's just because your denominator's smaller, in that, you know, overall waste versus your population, which makes sense. And then your per capita income, just how that compares for the county versus the statewide average. And we dropped off a couple draft versions of the plan there, too. If you guys, I don't know if you've got a copy of it or not, but if you want to flip through that, some very fun reading. So then capturing your existing solid waste system. So we have curbside recycling available in six count, or six cities, I'm sorry. You're at, currently at three recycling drop-off centers, one of which is at the landfill. And I'm sure some of you, most of you know this, but just to reiterate. 11 used oil filter and antifreeze collection facilities, one of which is at the landfill. And then the landfill being your main property, we have the MSW disposal area, the demo landfill, lead acid battery, household appliance and scrap metal collection, used tire collection, yard waste composting, brush disposal. And currently in the process of constructing the Crowing County Recycling Center. I believe we're about 98% complete.
Pretty close, should be by the end of the week.
So, pretty soon that should be up and running, and then that will be that one-stop shop for the residents to take their materials. At the landfill itself, just the overall snapshot of the quantities managed and diverted in 2022. And these are, the blue boxes are the landfill specific numbers. So yard waste, brush, used oil, electronics, batteries, mattresses, tires, appliances. Those are like what we're taking and capturing and pulling out of that waste stream, just to conserve the life of the landfill, landfills, I should say, both MSW and the demolition landfill. The other thing on this screen is the county recycling rate. And this was reported as lower in 2022. And I wanted to specifically mention that that doesn't mean that your recycling rate was lower in 2022. That means that the reported values aren't coming in. And I don't know if you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, I've been, in some of our regional meetings I've been to, this is a, not just Crowing County specific problem. Other counties are having the same problem, is getting that recycling data from local businesses. The big box stores, the MPCA gets that data. But the other, the manufacturing businesses, they're not required to give us that information. We send a letter out every year requesting that information, but they're not required to give it to us. So each year, that recycling rate could vary depending on who sends that data back to us. So in these regional groups, we've been working together to see if there's anything the state can do to either they collect all the data and report it to us? Can they require them to give us that data? So we aren't seeing these numbers jump really high one year because a big business reported, and the next year they didn't. Or do we use that data from prior years and just average it? Because we can safely assume they probably had the same recycling generation rate. Are we allowed to do that? Is the state okay with that? So we're working through that. So that is why there has been a drop is, like, Green Forest Recycling, for example. One year, the first year they opened, they had a massive amount. It was huge. Your numbers were large last year. We got no numbers from them. So that can really fluctuate those recycling rates.
So Jessica, a quick question on that. Does that impact the amount we get from the SCORE grant, then?
No, it does not.
It doesn't?
No.
I think it may only impact if you drop below the goal.
Yeah, and the goal we have to meet, what is it, 35%? And it's a couple of years out before we have to meet that goal. It's like a 10-year goal rate was 35%. And we've been above that, and we still are above that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so in the plan, I guess, system improvements that we recommended in the plan, because the PCA does want to see, you know, some recommendations. So one, the big one was obviously the Crowing County Recycling Center, as we touched on already. So it replaced the existing HHWE waste and mattress buildings. It is, will be a one-stop shop for problem and recycling materials, and hopefully encourage residents to utilize the facility to continue getting those wastes out of the stream. You know, again, one-stop shop, so it's more convenient. You know, they just all have to go to one place for everything. And we really do hope that that increases the participation in recycling and diversion efforts. Another plan improvement is increased education. So just through advertising, you know, outreach on digital platforms, you know, utilizing Facebook and, and what other, you know, type of platforms that, to get to the people and, you know, get them ads that way. I don't know, I don't think many people read a newspaper anymore, unfortunately. So, you know, trying to reach people where they see the data. So, so we get that information out to a larger population, and we also hope that that increases participation. And then documenting source reductions. So through the, this update, we were able to identify, and these were just a couple of them, source reduction efforts that are currently occurring that hadn't been documented previously. So like the Habitat for Humanity and Costco and Super 1 Food donations. So just better identifying those, capturing those, and getting those into your plan, as well as, you know, trying to get the reporting efforts through for the activities that are currently occurring.
So another quick question.
Yes.
Jessica, are we using SharePoint, our SharePoint, or any other electronic mechanism to increase that education, to make, to reach out to people so that they are more aware of what's available out there at the landfill?
We are. Like she is mentioning, we want to increase that, find more unique ways, not just a press release saying, here's three recycling locations. Getting a little more unique advertising out there. I don't, I wouldn't say we use SharePoint very much, but we do use our Facebook page, our Twitter, everything posts out there. We do still advertise in the newspaper every month, the local newspapers, and on their web pages as well. But we're looking for ways, like Tanya had mentioned, what, what other ways can we get the word out to residents? We send that coupon out. We try to update that and make that a little easier to read and focus on what programs are available each year.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, it's not advancing. So overall, the recommendations of the plan, where your existing programs have been successful in-
Away from my-
Well, maybe the battery is still- I was like, okay.
But maybe she was misusing it or something.
Work with, so again, working with the haulers and businesses to try to get that data in the door and get the data in the door more consistently. You know, encouraging the state to maybe put some requirements on that so that we can get data so that we have a, you know, more accurate number being reported. And basically that it's not financially prudent to have a different waste management method in the county. Like, you know, some methods that may work for bigger cities may, you know, isn't financially feasible for your county.
Just a quick question. Do you ever get anything, I was serving on Habitat's board, and they always put out a thing that they're, you know, this much stuff we've diverted from the landfill. Do you get that information at all from Habitat?
We will be now, yep. This is the first year we've reached out and learned about the program, and they've sent us a lot of their data, and will continue to.
Yeah, because I know we've done a lot of stuff through that store, so just, and getting that word out there, that's also Habitat's job. That's not all the county's job or your guys' job, but it's a team.
Right. Yeah, but capturing that then, and putting, getting it into recycling numbers for the county, so. All right, so next steps, I guess, are, so we, that was a draft plan that we submitted. So the PCA will review it and provide any comments they have. There will be a, you know, a back and forth, if you will, on, you know, what they want to see in the plan versus what, you know, county is agreeable to. Once we get those, the back and forth resolved, the plan is to, then, once we have the final, we'll bring it back to the board for approval. And then a board resolution goes to the PCA to meet the 30-day public note, or to get the plan on public notice, then. That's all I have.
How does this-
That was it.
How does this get paid for? Does it get paid through the SCORE funds or, or doing the plan, getting it to the state, all that stuff? This is a 10-year update, right?
Yep, yep. It's paid through the solid waste funds and our landfill funds, a little bit of both, because it touches on both of our programs. So it's through all the, yep, SCORE funding, tipping fees at the landfill.
It would be interesting to figure, have a discussion about how we could engage some of these non-reporters to move our number up. Because I know when I go down there and testify on the SCORE grant, and I'm begging for part of that, we got 3% this year, so there's 27% still sitting in that general fund that should be out into the various landfills around the state. But if we could push that number up to, that would be a nice data point to show them that our efforts are significant and that we are achieving goals that, that we all should be trying to achieve. But we need their money. And well, actually, we need our money back to us.
Right.
So, we could have a discussion about how we get those, like your Costcos and Walmarts and Targets and whoever else out there is, you know, the state of Minnesota. I know they do shredding and that out there. So how do we get them to report to us so we can move that 38 number up to a 45 number or 50 number? That would be great to see that.
I see we have our great landfill manager here, who, Marv, does a tremendous job for us. And we, I can speak for the county board, I know I can on this one. We appreciate you, Marv. And I guess if you, Marv, I do have a question, and then if you, if you've got a small update for us on how things are going out there, I don't know if you want to give an update, it's up to you. But I do have a question, and my question is, is I was out there, brought some household hazardous waste, and as you go past the main building, and on your left-hand side, there's that metal building, and it's got the, the culvert sticking up that's out like this. I don't know about you, but I'm kind of the kind of person where I always try to look for, okay, so if I'm walking and there's an obstruction there, am I gonna trip over that? So I look at that, Marvin, and I see those great big garbage trucks coming in on that road. And what happens if one's coming out and one's coming in, and that culvert is hanging out there, and he hits that culvert? Do you think that that needs to come out of there, or should the building be tore down? That's kind of my question. If you want to come up to the mic, Marv. And then if you want to give us an update on how things are going, it's up to you.
Everything's going really good up at the landfill. We're absolutely busy right now. I mean, swamped. Employees are few and far between. We're working with that, as everybody knows. That's under insurance, and it's been run through insurance. I can't touch that until the insurance claim goes through. So it is embedded and spent underneath, and it's not going anywhere.
Okay.
But the ice came off that roof after all these years since 1984, and never, ever before. But the ice come off this year, so much snow and ice that it bent it over and tore it off the building.
So once, once the insurance, or this is all straightened out, are we gonna tear that down?
Yeah, it'll be gone.
Good.
And then the building, and the wall will be fixed, or whatever we're gonna do with that building, so.
That looks like it needs to be tore down. I don't know, bad deal, so. No, you're, you're, you're sitting in the same position as everybody else. I was gonna send this to our, our great county administrator, but I saw something on my phone, a news article, Yellowstone National Park, which you'd think everybody'd want to work at Yellowstone, a beautiful place. They can't even find help. You know, and I, I just saw something else, some police department, I don't know, their, their, their staff is down half, and they're trying to find people. I, I don't know where all the workers are. I don't, I don't, I don't get it.
We're managing okay out there. I mean, the waste is coming in, it's heavy. I mean, it's been a good summer so far. I mean, we're up in some of our, our garbage totals are up for the last few months. So it's a slow start to the, to the year, because you had all the snow, and that went in through, all the way through April, and in May, it, it was, it was heavy, so.
And then I would think, you know, I think all of us wish it would rain. I know I wish it would rain, but I think with, without the rain out at the landfill, we always worry about leachate. When it's dry like this, I would assume there's hardly any leachate or-
Right. This year totals, usually right now, I'm sitting on anywhere from probably 6 million gallons to be treated. Right now, I'm less than 2 million gallons. So the leachate is down, but also I am working face spraying on the garbage. And in Rice County, there was a big fire. I don't know if anybody heard about that, and landfill fire, and they're still fighting that fire. And they, they got lots, I think the last was $500,000 into fighting this fire inside the landfill. It's like a peat fire that goes through the waste. So, and more they chase it and open it up, the more oxygen they get in, and faster it goes. So basically, every night, we are putting on anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 gallons of water back on the working face, wetting it down, making sure that we haven't, you know, we don't get into that situation.
Sure.
We've had about four or five fires already this year. Small ones, batteries, rechargeable batteries, when we hit them, they break open and nickel cad even, they start on fire, they turn red hot. So we've been monitoring it really well, so.
Well, appreciate you.
You update, everything is running smooth so far. So, very busy. Recycling is coming in really heavy. So hopefully our numbers are up. Thank you.
Thanks, Marv.
Thank you very much.
So October is when we get the final blessing from MPCA?
We don't have a definitive date yet. It depends on how long it takes them to get us back, or get comments back to us. But they also want to do that environmental review first, too. So it's gonna be a little bit of a back and forth and getting through- and getting through all the review of the three different plans that were submitted.
Having read all 1,500 pages of it, you know, well, maybe not 1,500, but.
Mine have three documents, that's probably all right.
Very comprehensive report, I'll say that, or application. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
For the good of the cause, Rosemary, or Teresa, I've got a question. How do I put it back to the green screen?
Oh, you know how to do that, Paul.
Yeah.
You've been here long enough, you know how to do that.